I'd like to call this work session, this is council work session to order. If we may, I might just want to make a note to remind all the council people and everyone present that we are on a strict time schedule. So if I interrupt or make a motion or do something to cut you short, I apologize, but we are on a quick time, or short timeframe. Also, if we have the time left over, we will add 10 minutes at the end, or we will have 10 minutes at the end for other questions, and otherwise we will be strictly following this agenda. Thank you. Steve, would you like to explain to us the overview of the review and expense trends?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of everybody, there should be a handout of the copies of the slides that we'll go through tonight, and I believe there's copies in the back for the public, so. I'd like to go through and remind the council on the second slide of the mission statement for the city. It's always good to revisit that anytime you're looking at budgeting and, you know, I think we as an organization don't revisit this enough to know what the goals that were set at the council retreat. Moving into the trends for the city on the expenditures, this slide is an excerpt from the mayor's proposed budget presentation. It shows the proposed budget for 2012 at $31.6 million. The trends for the expenditures, you'll see here for the last five years, the five-year average is a little over $24 million for the overall budget, which includes the capital improvements and other miscellaneous special revenue funds, as well as the general operating, which you see on the right, of 12.7 over the last five years. In looking at the five-year trend, you'll see that 2012, the total is up, but that's primarily due to the $6 million of capital improvements that are being planned and proposed for the redevelopment of the old airport site. If you look at the general operating, you'll see that it's been pretty flat, it's even down over the last five years, and that is due again to, through attrition, there are proposed five less positions in 2012 versus the previous years. So you'll see there that the council has addressed some of the revenue cuts by the state, and we can talk about that when we get into the revenue projections. But you'll see there that the operating, general operating is pretty much flat in expenditures for the last five years. There may be shifting between different programs, but for the most part, it's even down. The revenues, again, this is an excerpt from the mayor's proposed budget, and this is revenues. A large portion of that is the fund balances, again, $6 million, as I mentioned. When you look at the overall picture, there's the redevelopment of the airport, you'll see the current property taxes and the local government aid are a large portion, as well as other financing sources, which is the intergovernmental transfers that the city collects from the municipal utility, Rice Hospital, and the other funds to cover administrative costs. Here's a five-year trend on page six of the revenues. Again, you'll see that the current property taxes are trending upward, and that is again contributing to the state. Up until 2012, the property tax levy system, there was a levy limit law, which, if the local government aid was reduced, the combination of local government aid and the current property taxes were tied together, and we have slides further on in the presentation to kind of give you an example of the five-year history on that. The local government aid, these are budgeted numbers. Again, the slide will talk a little bit about that. The notification and the budgeted numbers were somewhat different than what the city actually experienced, and that was due to unallotment, cuts, and reductions there. Again, the other financing sources you'll see are trending upward. That is due to, again, the intergovernmental transfer primarily from the municipal utilities, and that's based on their net worth, so as the utility is increased in value, the city does transfer in to cover some administrative costs there. But if you look along the bottom line, the revenues are pretty flat. The fund balances you'll see are trending downward, and again, that's because the margins are narrowing, and so there is less carryover from year to year, and according to current council policy, you take the excess revenues and factor it into your budgeting process. So, and the next slide is just the percentages. It's kind of, kind of give you an idea of what that does percentage-wise. But with that, Mr. Mayor, those are the trends in brief for the expenditures and revenues. Happy to answer any questions or comments.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Go ahead, Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report so far. On the other financing sources, primarily the MUC and Rice, because we've had such a large hit on uncompensated charity pay, what is it again that we receive on a transfer payment? Is that $200,000 for the last couple of years we've gotten from Rice?
It's slightly over $200,000 projected for 2012. It's been a little less, up to $200,000. They have experienced a little bit of growth, so it's projected to be a little over $200,000 in 2012.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions, or, Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve, again. On page six on the fund balances, that's actually surplus at the end of the year.
Those are actually numbers that were programmed into the budgeting process. If you'll see in 2012, $315,000 was the excess for 2010. It's always a year lagging behind, but yes, those are traditionally what's excess from year to year. But it's always, you have to remember that it's a two-year lag because of the process.
I understand, but I mean, the term surplus would apply.
It could be interchanged with excess.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Those are non-designated funds. The city does have a fund balance, and the finance committee is working on a fund balance policy that addresses certain other areas. So these are really excess that are, again, according to past practice, council policy to factor in, available for funding, so.
And they're two years behind, like you say.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Steve.
The operating levy, next item on the agenda. Again, this is an excerpt from the mayor's proposed budget. As I mentioned earlier, the notification and budgeted amount for local government aid has been changed by unallotment and state cutbacks. You'll see here that that started roughly in 2008, where the state started unallotting and reducing our local government aid. That process was done after levies were set, so it did not allow the city to factor that in, or go back and re-levy that, or increase your levy to make up for those reductions due to the timing of when those items were done. So in that case, the city's had to go back, and basically what the city has done is shifted capital purchases. It's been a two-year process, and that's been where the city has kind of looked at because it's been after the process. Now in 2012, it's somewhat projected to be make up for some of those capital purchases, and we'll talk about that in future slides as well. It also, in 2012, the levy limits went off, and so the amount that we were notified of a little over $4 million, the council did have the authority, since levy limits were no longer on, to increase your property tax levy to whatever level that you felt comfortable with. You'll see there that the property tax levy is projected to be increased by $196,000, which is a small portion of what was, the local government aid was reduced. Again, with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Odom?
Just a question. Steve, thank you. On the bottom of the page here, the difference from actual and difference from certified base, could you explain those two for me?
The difference from the actual amount there is, you'll see the 700, it's the combination of the local government aid, unallotment reduction, and the market value credit reduction. The certified base, the council reduced the amount that they could have levied for property taxes in 2011, and so the difference between the 844,000 and the 716,000 is the amount that the council could have levied. But if you remember, the council did not certify the full amount, that they were authorized under the levy limit law.
Thank you.
The page nine is just kind of a continuation there. It's a trend to show you, again, the comparison of the allotted LGA versus what was actually received, and levy to see where it's leveling off as far as the property tax levy versus the LGA in dollar amounts.
Go ahead, Councilman Hesse. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. One of the things that, I want to go back to this slide eight, property tax levy of just about $4 million. And we've, you know, we've had some discussion on that in the finance committee, but I'm just wondering, now that's one of the things that's within our control, and before we get too far into this, if anybody has any suggestions for reducing that. Hasn't been proposed, but I think this would be a time, if anyone thinks that perhaps the levy should be reduced. I think it's fine where it is, it would be my opinion, but just wondering if there's any other thoughts on that. Okay, fine, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment on that. I'd love to reduce it, however, I think that it also reflects the increase in our taxable property, doesn't it? I mean, as times gone, goes by, I mean, we collecting more money because we're increasing the tax base.
Approximately half of that will be generated by new construction costs.
Okay.
And that's one thing that the council has historically done, is that a minimum increased year property tax levy amount by the new construction.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, would you care to expand or expound on the what the actual increase of the levy is on the city, or for the city?
We did have some comparisons for a single-family home valued at about $114,000, and we don't have the slide in here, but I do have that information along. And the total city tax increase projected payable 2012 will be about $349 total on a $114,000 home.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered your question, Mr. Mayor.
It did.
As we have mentioned many times in the past, residential or property tax owner has a number, they have the city portion of their property tax, but they also have the Candy Lake County and Independent School District 347 make up the majority of their property taxes, and the city's is about 20 to 22 percent of that property tax bill. With that being said, the state, on the previous slide, did have a reduction in homestead credit. Homestead credit program was changed to what's called now the Homestead Market Value Exclusion Program. Just a brief history on the homestead credit, it was created in 2001, and the primary purpose of it was to help certain valued homeowners have a reduction in their property tax bill. Example would be of that would be if a property tax owner had a property tax bill of $800, the state would issue them, for example purposes, a $100 credit. The homeowner would pay the difference of $700. The state would take that $100 reduction credit issued and give it to the taxing jurisdictions. That's the way the program was supposed to work. The program actually worked like this. The first two steps were the same, where the state would issue the credit, property taxpayer would pay the difference. But the state fell short of revenues and thus did not forward that on to the taxing jurisdictions. I think they maybe done it, there's been some articles, I believe, maybe once in the last 10 years or something like that, I don't remember the exact numbers there. But then that would, then as a taxing jurisdiction, would come up short of revenues. Under the Homestead Market Value Exclusion Program, the state is basically taking those certain valued homes, and I don't know what that level is, but we can certainly find that out and give that information to the council. But they were, the new program will reduce the market value of those homes, basically understanding that that would then leave their property tax bill basically the same as the old program. The difference being the state was not going to issue that revenue to the taxing jurisdictions, all it did was shift those values over to the other aspects of the community of commercial, industrial, and the higher valued homes. The impact of this basically is twofold, and this is information that's been sent out by the League of Minnesota Cities. The first, the state is eliminating roughly $260 million a year of their obligations to the taxing jurisdictions. And the second, basically, still exempts lower valued homes, but they may still see tax rate increase to generate the same amount of dollars because there's less market value to spread the dollars that are levied against. So that's a brief explanation of where we're at on that.
Mr. Mayor. Certainly, tell. Yes, so in other words, Steve, as I understand it, been reading about this and it spotted me ever since that meeting out at the country club. Outstate Minnesota's going to get hurt because we don't have the commercial tax base to shift those taxes to. So more of our homestead, homesteads are going to have to absorb that increase outstate.
Twofolds why outstate Minnesota will basically see a larger impact than the metro is that exact scenario, where we, a lot of communities don't have that base of commercial and industrial value. Also, the homes in the metro area are valued higher, so they didn't qualify for homestead credit anyway. And there was a lot of communities in metro suburbs that didn't receive any homestead credit because of the value of their homes.
So when everybody gets their tax statements for real estate taxes due in payroll in 2012, people are going to notice some significant increases.
They would see possibly some increases if all levies stayed stagnant and relatively flat. They could still possibly see increases, yes, that's correct. If there is a slight increase by any one in all three of the taxing jurisdictions, that again, that would impact it as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The number one under the two immediate impacts, Steve, says the state has eliminated more than $260 million a year from reimbursements to local governments. They were already eliminating them. So how much of that money, is this the real total value that they're eliminating, or is it just the amount they didn't send out?
The $260 million is the amount that they had budgeted, and it does not reflect the amount they actually paid. The amount they actually paid was somewhat less than the 260.
Okay, so that number is misleading, because they wouldn't have sent it out anyway. They didn't budget for it, but they weren't going to send out half of it. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, it's misleading in the fact if, if one would assume that they did pay the full amount. It's not misleading in the regards that they did have that programmed into their budget. Again, when they were dealing with budget shortfalls, that's why they didn't send it out, and they were balancing it after the fact.
Okay, so then, by them stating that amount, and thus absorbing it and saying, gee, my taxes are going to go up, they're not going to go up as much as we think they will?
Well, the state will be able to, on their projections, they've basically eliminated the program, so now if their projections are more accurate than they have been in the past, they'll be able to reallocate that $260 million to another program. That's what this changing of the program did.
Thank you.
Mr. Tim? Are you going to do the additional requests? Thank you, Steve.
Charlene Stevens, City Administrator. I wanted to talk to you about a couple of requests for the 2012 budget that were not originally included in the budget, and some recommendations we have on those. One of those is our fixed base operator out at the airport. That contract is about $23,200, and is subject to negotiation, but that's about what we're paying for it right now. And just so you kind of know where we are, we do have a contract with Maximum Cruise Aviation, which is Wilmer Air Service annually. And one of some of the things that they provide out at the airport is they issue notices to airmen about runway conditions, they help make decisions to close the runway during hazardous conditions, they monitor and inspect the runway daily, they replace runway and taxiway lights as necessary, keep the sidewalk shoveled around the airport and building and mow and trim the lawn. And they're really the onsite contact for pilots and guests out at the airport, and they set the traffic patterns for landing and ground movement, and they're kind of, and they are also responsible for routine building maintenance and monitoring some of the systems out there. And one of the key things about them, of course, is they know the aviation industry. And since we no longer have an airport manager on staff and out there, we feel that this is an important, that this is an important service for the city, and I would recommend that we look at, how do we, that we look at including that in the 2012 budget. It was not originally proposed for the 2012 budget, but in looking through the contract and looking through the information, I would propose that we would include that in the 2012 budget. Another request that you may be familiar with that was received at the finance committee was a request from Let's Go Fishing, which is a charitable organization that, you know, that functions across the street, across the street, but their home offices are here in Wilmer. And they've made a request for $50,000 over a ten, over a five-year period, so $10,000 a year over five years. We have not included that request in the budget at this point, and so would propose that there maybe be some discussion about that, or we would like some direction on that. And then the final item that kind of is an additional request is that from the fire department, there was a quint proposed and discussed at the finance committee, and that's an apparatus for the fire department, and it was proposed at, excuse me, $640,000. It is not proposed for the 2012 budget. It was in the 2013 budget, and it was proposed at a lower cost of $450,000, so the cost is higher. It's also being asked to move up a year. And that may be something we want to talk about as we talk about vehicle replacements later, but those are the couple of items for additional requests. The airport fixed base operator, which I am recommending at this time, and the Let's Go Fishing, as well as the quint, and those are, those are not currently funded.
Thank you, Charlene. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Charlene. I just want to make sure to recall on the fixed base operator, that was left out of the original budget. It wasn't the intent that we had some idea how we were going to eliminate it?
It was not, it was not, it was not the intent to leave it out of the 2012 budget. It was left out of the 2012 budget. It was not the intent to leave it out of the 2012 budget. There was not another plan of operation proposed. So I'm coming back to recommend that we include that in the 2012 budget, because it is important to, to the service we have out at the airport, to have that fixed base operator and that point of contact, and somebody who's familiar with the aviation industry and can do all of the things that I just listed.
Okay, and then, just to follow up on that, if that goes in, something else will have to come out?
Something else will have to come out, or, I mean, we will have to adjust, you know, we'll have to adjust revenues and expenditures in order to balance that, and we would bring that recommendation back to the next finance committee.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Reese?
Two questions. The $23,200 to the fixed base, to the FBO, is that the full payment?
That's what, that's an estimate on what it could cost. I mean, we would, we're, they have a contract that requires negotiation. It could be higher than that, but this is the number that we have right now for the budget. But we would begin those negotiations, we will budget accordingly and fund that.
Okay. The other question is in regards to the quint. You said it was originally proposed at 450, and now it's 640, even though we're buying it earlier.
There is a different cost in that, and I'm sure the fire chief, Mark Calvin, can ask those, can answer those questions. At this time, I'm not necessarily recommending that we go forward with the quint. I mean, it is part of the vehicle replacement. I think it needs to be part of the vehicle replacement policy and vehicle replacement discussion. But it is on the, it is on the horizon, and if we don't do it in 2012, we will be looking at it again in 2013.
Excuse me, Charlene. Chief Governor, would you like to respond to that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Reese. Yes, basically what I did is I presented that as a informational tool, suggesting that if the vehicle were purchased in 2012, there could be a cost savings of $18,000 to $25,000 because of changes in DOT standards. It was the idea to float the balloon, so to speak, and I guess I would agree with the city administrator that it's a good idea to talk about it, but that probably is better to be placed in the 2013 budget and go through the vehicle replacement plan.
Yeah, but I'm still, I'm still confused, my Chief Kelvin, because it was proposed in 13 for 450, and now it's 640.
The amount in 2013 was for a pumper only. The quint is a different concept of a vehicle. It has a ladder on top of it, and so basically it'd give you a second elevated master stream to put water on higher buildings. It would save dollars in time on our current ladder, and it would extend the useful life of the ladder truck. And by doing, extending the useful life of the ladder truck, we, similar to what we did with the tanker when we bought that, we made that a combination vehicle, a tanker and a pumper, and by that, we're able to get rid of pieces of equipment. This way, we'd be able to trade in one of our engines, and then we'd have a second elevated master stream, which would help us with our ISO, our NFPA standards, and that would reduce the time that we put on the ladder. So that's the reason for the increased dollars from the 450.
How do you handle, city administrator, how do you handle $640,000 additional?
It's not $640,000, is it $640,000 additional? We would actually go back to, I mean, in 2013, we would have to, if it does indeed need to be replaced in 2013, and if that's the year, we would need to adjust and amend the capital replace, the capital improvement plan or the capital outlay to accommodate that, and we would have to shift other, other projects or other pieces of equipment out in order to accommodate that. So, I mean, it's just, it's something to be aware of, and it's on the planning horizon, and we'll come back at that time with a recommendation on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Let's Go Fishing, I don't think we need to take that as, that's the only solution, or that's the only thing we can do. That's their request, is $10,000 a year for five years. If we are inclined to do something, we could put any amount on the table that we would like, make it a one-year request, or however we'd like to do it, but I think we need to talk about that in a little bit.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, Dennis. I guess the first question I have is, does it meet the public purpose test? Would it meet the public purpose test?
I'm assuming you're talking about Let's Go Fishing, though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Asking me? I'm asking anybody.
I really think that's a question, I mean, that's a question for the council. I mean, this has come before, this request has come forward to council. We have, you know, the city has funded some charitable organizations in the past, so it's not that we've never done this before. It's just a matter of, you know, is this, is this a community priority, a council priority, and at what level? And, and it was not something that was requested, and it was not something that was in time for the, you know, they did not make the request for the 2012 budget, so it was not included. They've subsequently come back and are seeking funding. And I agree with Councilmember Anderson, I mean, this is their request, it does not mean that that's the only level of funding.
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Charlene, for the information and the request. The Let's Go Fishing, as I recall, started with volunteers only. They volunteered fishing pontoons, vehicles to pull them with, people that would volunteer their time, and it's morphed into a sort of a business. I believe it's still a 501(c)(3) profit. However, they own pontoons and vehicles, they have paid people on their business plan and... They have paid people on their business plan, and it did not, Wilmer didn't start this. A group of individuals did. From this area started that. And I don't think it meets the public purpose test because of that. I mean, I could see it as the volunteer thing. It's, it's, it's a great venue for seniors to go out and fish, but I also believe there's a lot of people out there that will continue to volunteer this. Where they ran into trouble was insurance liability. And again, that's where the government steps and says, you have to do this and you have to do that. You're not even allowed to volunteer to take someone on your pontoon. You don't know the liability you're taking up. It's, it's terrible that it's that way, and that's why they formed the 501(c)(3) and took out the $30,000 of your insurance. But I still believe there's a lot of people out there that will volunteer to do this at their pontoons, regardless of the liability issue. And then I think it needs to continue as a volunteer organization. Times are tough, and the economy's not going to, it's going to take 10, 20 years to climb out of what we're in, and we haven't seen the worst of it yet. This LGA thing, it is, is someday going to go away, and then we're talking $4 million plus for our city here. And if we make a five-year commitment today, what if it went away next year? We gotta say, sorry, you know, your commitment's gone. Now you better go look somewhere else. I still think they need to look at the service organizations and continue that, that type of funding. And once again, there's volunteers out there that will, are willing to do this, and I think it needs to remain in that way.
Charlene, if I may, this would be better discussed at a committee meeting. Am I, am I right on that?
Yeah, I think this request was made to the Finance Committee, and so it was brought forward as an, again, it's just as an, as information that it's not, that it's not an item that's, that included in the budget. I think any guidance to the Finance Committee and having further discussion on it is appropriate or, but I, we are not expecting a decision from the council.
Councilman Anderson, could you put that on your agenda?
We'll have it on, well, we're not meeting for a couple. We're on the next Finance.
And I guess I just would clarify a few on their funding request. Just to be clear, what they did ask for is, they did ask for $10,000 a year for five years, and they have asset, and they would split that funding in the first year in 2012. 80% would go to organizational support, 20% would go to endowment. 2013, it would change to 70 and 30%, 2014, 60 and 40%. And then the final two years, they would split that, $10,000, 50% and 50% versus their organizational support and endowment. And again, I just wanted to clarify what their actual request is.
Sure. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Are you going to cover the, you've got?
Yep. I want to talk a little bit about capital outlay on this. And you can see the overall capital outlay program for the city, about seven and a half, seven and a half million dollars. I kind of broke that down for you into projects and then vehicles. So about $6.2 million of that is proposed in various projects, everything from furniture in police to genie lift for the Civic Center, down to, you know, flat ceiling and season side runway. And then, of course, the largest expenditure in that $6 million is for the industrial park, and so for completion and expansion of the industrial park. And that funding, of course, comes from the local option sales tax. And then the other portion of the vehicle, of the capital outlay program is in vehicles and vehicle replacement, and that's guided by a vehicle replacement policy. And that policy guides the, you know, when and how vehicles are replaced, and it does everything from, you know, mileage and maintenance costs to hours of usage, depending on the type of vehicle or type of equipment and such. And so we're proposing about 1.2, 1.2, 1 and 1/4 million dollars in vehicle replacement, some of those are patrol cars and detective cars. We also have some, some large equipment in the Public Works Department, a couple of loaders, dump trucks, and, and pickups and such that are proposed for replacement as part of the vehicle replacement policy. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the capital outlay, and certainly all of the department directors are here if there are specific questions about a department project.
Are there questions or comments? Councilman Omen?
I have a question, Charlene, on the parks and the concession stand at Swanson Field.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Steve, could you answer that on the proposed to, for the parks and concession stand, the proposed improvements, what it entails? Is that what you're looking for, Councilman Omen?
Mayor Yanis and Councilmember Omen, our game plan is to improve the site by the Orange Baseball Field. Currently, the concession stand at Swanson is not usable. So our plan is to restore that facility into a restroom facility and storage area for park equipment, and then to create a new concession stand press box over by the Orange Baseball Field. Our game plan is to work with the baseball boosters on this project, and we're taking a multi-year approach to that. We're thinking it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood. We've priced out similar facilities that have been built in the last few, few years in different communities, and the game plan, at least what we're looking at is in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000. So we're looking at a three-year plan to put together enough resources to get that done in about 2014. It would be a press box, concession stand, more of the smaller type items of possibly hot dogs, and then popcorn, and, and just packaged goods versus grilling stations and such like that, because we believe we've got that over at Baker right now.
Thank you, Steve. Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charlene, on the capital outlay program for vehicles, I see we've got a CSO pickup there under the police protection and then a pickup under the Civic Center. Those pickups are used just locally. They're not, I don't believe they're driven to Minneapolis or out of the county. They're for local use. Can't we expect them to run a little longer? And I don't know which one they have or what they're replacing. I don't, I don't know that, but couldn't they run 150, 200,000 miles or more than that? I mean, these vehicles today are built to last a long time. And is that, and are both of them new vehicles?
Okay. I'm going to let the chief and Steve kind of answer the mileage on those vehicles. Again, I mean, they're per the vehicle replacement policy, and that does guide, you know, does guide the replacement, and we are always trying to kind of match that, kind of, I guess I call it the sweet spot of, you know, right before the vehicle's going to, you know, have major repair and major service and such, but we do try to extend the life as much as we possible can. So I don't know if, I don't know if either the chief or Steve have kind of what the mileage are or the ones proposed to be replaced.
Thank you. On that particular vehicle, that is a 2005, and when I filled this sheet out early last spring, at that time, it had 137,897 miles on it. Those are all city miles. I guess it's council decision if they want us to push it to 200, 300,000, whatever you, whatever you wish.
I think we've, you know, on that one, I think we've tried to push the miles as far as we can push them.
Mm-hmm. We were going to discuss vehicle replacement policy somewhere along that. I don't think we have had that discussion yet, but that should be part of it, I think.
Yeah. I think we, you know, we can bring back the, we can bring back the vehicle replacement policy for review. We could probably start that review process at the Finance Committee. I think Chair Anderson has asked for that, and so we can, again, kind of review the guidelines that we use for, for vehicle replacement. And that's really by, you know, class of vehicle. And again, you know, depending on the vehicle, what the, what the guidelines are for replacement. Some of it's age, and some of it's mileage, as you know, and then some of it with large equipment is, you know, hours.
The Civic Center one, was that, was that a new pickup, too?
I believe a new pickup's proposed.
Yes, Mayor Yanis, Councilmember Christiansen, that pickup is for Civic Center usage, and it's the facility that they, or the vehicle they use to get around, but it's also the plow that they use to clean the snow in that area. And I'm not sure of the year off the top of my head, I didn't bring that information with me. But it doesn't have the tremendous miles because it's used locally, but it's got the wear and tear of pushing snow. You'll also see in the Leisure Services, the van. The van that that will be replacing is a 1996. We did what you said. That one still doesn't have a lot of miles on it. I think it's less than 70,000 miles, but it is 16 years old and in the repair shop right now. So we are trying to do what you're saying and extend those useful life when, when possible, especially for your vehicles that we use for our services.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for clarification, it is, I intend to look at the vehicle replacement policy and have it reviewed, changed if necessary, so it will be applicable for the 2013 budget. So we'll start that review probably after the budgeting process is completed.
Okay.
And I would propose you, you know, these are the vehicles that we would adopt if the vehicle replacement, if the vehicle policy review results in any changes to usage or such, I mean, we would, you know, we'll change our vehicle replacement to reflect that. For 2012, we would propose, these are the vehicles we're currently proposing, under the guidelines we currently have.
I understand you have a watch list for us?
We do. We have, again, and I call it a watch list, and these are kind of items that are on the planning horizon. We haven't necessarily identified dollars for them, and some of that is because we haven't identified a project yet or a fully scaled and scoped project and such. And so a couple of the items that are on the watch item is quiet zones. I know, we know that those issues, that has been raised as an issue of concern in the community, has been raised by some council members, the mayor, and so developing and funding, you know, quiet zones. But we haven't identified funding to that, and that's partially because we don't have a full project and a scope to really set the funding. But that's something that's on the planning horizon, and how we would fund that and where we would fund that would, again, be probably out of capital outlay, so that would change out years. Another one is stormwater improvements. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on stormwater. There's been the Stormwater Task Force and some of the recommendations, and there's been a study on stormwater. And again, that's an important issue for the community, but we have not in the 2012 budget, either in the general operating or in the capital outlay. We haven't identified specific projects and allocated specific funding to them at this time for the 2012 budget. But it doesn't mean that we have forgotten these items, just means that they are on our planning horizon, and they're likely to be items that you see in future capital outlays and future capital planning, much like the, much like the vehicles.
Are there any other questions or comments for Charlene? Councilman Omen?
One question, Charlene. Also on that list, there's things, other things, items to and of, quite a while, living in 2012, we had Highway 12, opening up Highway 12 budget in the last, the last year's budget.
Okay.
Is that, is there any movement on that, or are we going to look at re?
There's some discussion going on with the Wilmer Design Center about that, if that plan is going to change and revising that. I mean, again, that would be an item that we have not allocated dollars to in the 2012 project, and that hasn't risen to the priority to fund it in 2012.
But it was on the, I believe it was on the budget for the last couple of years.
It may have been in the 2011, 2010 capital outlay, but we haven't spent those dollars, and we haven't designed a project.
Is that a belief with the process now, or they're, they're looking at, if we can't open up that area, that they're looking at making a primary entrance to downtown area on Thurgood, Third Street, by the store?
I think there are some, there's some discussions with the Design Center about maybe some changes in their plan, and some of that's based on the information about what would really be involved in opening up Highway 12 and it being more complex or more costly than was originally envisioned. But those conversations are ongoing, so that will change as well, I think.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, if there's not, I think.
That kind of concludes the presentation that we had, and, you know, if there's any other items or that would like to be discussed or, or item for discussion, or again, to come back with additional information, be happy to, to provide any of that.
We've got about 13 minutes, so if you've got questions, we'll have Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'm wondering if the, all the department heads that submitted their budgets included the 7% increase in December for electrical rates, because that's all part of everybody's budget also. Is that, is that something that was considered?
I guess I'd ask first on public works estimate, majority of the facilities and such.
I know when we put together the waste treatment budget, that was taken into consideration. And I'd have to double check on the public works as well, but I know for sure we did take into account when we did the waste treatment.
We will go back and verify that, but obviously that is an expense that we know is coming, and so if it's not included, then we will have to adjust budgets accordingly.
Okay. And then one other thing that you, we're, I bring up these vehicles as far as replacement, and maybe looking for a place to cut it, because I know we're going to have to get some money somewhere for this airport fixed base operator contract that we have. I don't know where else you'd suggest, but those are a couple of small items, just to get some money from.
Thank you.
Charlene, I'd like to ask you, if you would, to explain, I think, Steve, you did a really good job of explaining it in the short time that you had, but could you explain further the, where the kicking the can down the road, so to speak, how that happens?
Well, some of the challenges, yeah, some of the challenges, Ben, and I'm not sure if I can, if you go back to, I guess what slide that was where we, it kind of adjusted local government aid and such when the, when the state has done unallotments, and we've had, and that's been done after the fact and after budgets had set and after levies have been set, we've had to go back to the budget and adjust to, you know, essentially account for that lost revenue. And the way you account for lost revenue is really by reducing your expenditures. And so over the years, what that has done is really kind of come out of capital outlay and has shifted projects, you know, maybe shifted either vehicles or projects from one year out to a further year, and, you know, in essence, you know, kind of kick the can down the road and maybe try to get a little bit longer life out of a vehicle, or try to, you know, stretch out a project and such. And so, you know, it eventually does and will catch up with the city, and I think we'll look at that when we start looking forward to the 2013 budget on our capital project and trying to develop more of a comprehensive capital improvement plan over the next five years and showing what our real capital needs are for the city and, you know, infrastructure needs as well as, you know, equipment needs and such, and see how we have deferred some of that and such. But eventually, it does kind of catch up, and we are in this budget year trying to kind of catch up with some of that. We've allocated some additional dollars to capital outlay to try to catch up with some of that and, and do some additional projects and such.
Thank you for saying that, because I was going to point out that we did.
Page eight, I think, if you look at the slides.
Catch up a little bit from the previous years. Am I right, Steve, on that? Mayor, if I could help add into Mr. Christiansen's comment on utilities, because the Civic Center's part of the largest user of utilities, we did increase that due to that 7% increase in cost out there, but not the Aquatic Center. So hopefully, we're all right with that one.
We'll go back through and look at that, but that's a good point, and it's known expense, and so we'll, we'll go back and look and see what the impact is.
Councilman Omen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charlene, we have currently, the cultural diversity budget is $42,000, correct?
I believe that's correct for 2012.
And that hasn't been changed from last year. It has been changed, I think, a few years prior to that, or so.
Was it last year? Okay, it was $42,000 last year as well.
Last year, yes.
But it stayed the same.
I think it was reduced probably from last. Do we have a written agreement with the school, school district, or?
At one time, I asked, Charlene, where it comes from or where it goes.
I'll have to go back and do some research on that, is to see if we have an ongoing written agreement or how that's, how that is structured. I think initially, there was a written agreement, so, but I can go back and look through that. I don't have that answer tonight, but I'm happy to get that answer for you.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking we could cut that budget in half and take care of that, or most, the majority, or 90%, 95% of a fixed base operator budget, very easily. I question, everybody's afraid to tackle it, but we're trying to get down to bare bones here, and we have other requests. I mean, that should be, that should be cut to the Design Center, Wilmer Design Center, the budget was cut in half, and there we're actually going to return on the investment there with grants and other, other things that we have received. So I'm questioning the validity of which is more important, and I'm thinking after the change in diversity in our community, which I don't have any problem with, I think at one point in time, you have to, you have to stop milking the stuff, feeding the cow if it's not giving you milk. One way of saying it, very simple, I, I think that could be trimmed without any, without any major significant changes in our community. I question not the individuals that are working in that department. I just think that our community has changed and, I think, adopted, adapted very well to the changes in our population. And I think that's a little fluff we could trim down very easily, like put that into a better, a better place.
Thank you, Councilman. I would comment that it is important that we find out where that money goes or what happens to it. happens.
We'll bring that information back to the Finance Committee.
Before we, you know, I'd hate to cut and find out that it's something that's, that's why I was asking if we had a written agreement with them, or?
We'll get that information for you. We'll get that information for the Finance Committee and the Council.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Councilman Dachin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we have a little insight into where, what has happened in the last number of months on quiet zones? Where are we on those with respect to implementing them?
Do we have time to go into that?
I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the clock. I, you know, I think we have, we've had some discussions with the railroad, but we haven't come up with a, you know, and we continue to have some discussions with them. We don't have a project planned for implementation of those at this time, but we'll continue to have those discussions and develop that plan and develop that project, and then bring some recommendations back.
Is the plan to, is the plan to segment it so that we at least are doing small amounts at the time?
The mayor's been more involved in those discussions than I am, so I guess I would defer back to the mayor.
I would say this about that, is that the discussions that we have been having have been with Houston, Burlington, northern, out of Houston, the main office, and some local people here that have some say in the matter. But there are certain things that would be requested by them of the city if we could get the quiet zone, like, for example, closing an intersection or something like that would be involved, and this would have to be discussed at great length before we could do something like that. I hope I haven't confused you with my answer, but it's.
I think we're still in the early planning.
It is really in the early planning stages, yeah.
But we do recognize it's a priority and important, and the mayor and staff are continuing to work on it.
We are working on it.
It is clear as mud.
Okay. It was meant to be.
And then, if I could, some of us, Charlene, attended a meeting through the Chamber of Commerce a number of months back, and we had Peter Hutchinson, who was the State of Minnesota Finance Commissioner, and some significant things that I recall that he said was that we cannot kick the can down the road any longer. We have to make some structural changes to the way we do business. He used the term, "It will take us at least 25 years to get out of the situation that we're in," and that we are now operating in what he called a new normal. The old normal isn't valid any longer, so I think that we need to keep that in mind as we discuss the budget.
Thank you.
Councilman Dachin?
Uh, Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Fagerly brought up a few meetings ago, CAT funding, and if the state and federal government does not, if they decrease their funding, that we, as a city, would be responsible for about 80 to 85 grand a year. Is that, is that anywhere in?
That is not in the 2012 budget. I mean, we have gotten some, you know, there's some information out there on that that could change that, and that really should, I guess I should have listed that as one of our watch items as well. We don't think that'll impact the 2012 budget, and so we've budgeted the CAT funding at the level that was requested, but yes, it could have any impact. Again, as to the funding formula and how that changes and what the local share might be, and so that is something that we are keeping our eyes on, and again, is kind of on the 2013 planning horizon.
Okay. Councilman Chris? Baseball boosters, we're still in our agreement with them, what was it, a five year?
I believe it was a five year, and I think we're in the final year of the five year.
This is the?
12 would be the final year.
12 will be the?
12 will be the final year of the agreement, so it is funded for this year.
Any further questions, comments? Did you have something that you wanted to add, Holly?
I was just going to address the quiet zone issue by Councilmember Dachin.
Sure, maybe you can shed some light on it here.
Certainly. The two quiet zones that are planned are the Wilmer Avenue Crossing, which has been planned for several years but has been put on hold. So once the land release is completed, then the Wilmer Avenue connection does include a quiet zone for that crossing. The other quiet zone area, which is budget, uh, planned for 2013, is the Trotta Avenue Crossing. So those are the two crossings that would have quiet zones within the next couple of years. And I believe the crossings that you were referring to, Mary Yanish, or the ones at 7th and 10th Street, are a little bit more complicated to deal with.
A little bit more complicated.
And those are kind of, and those are kind of in-out years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Go call.
Mayor Yanish?
Here.
Councilmember Reese?
Here.
Christensen?
Over here.
Anderson?
Here.
Ahmend?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Dachin?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
DeBlick?
Present.
One absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? During none, we will approve the consent items as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
We didn't have a motion.
No, I'm sorry, let's do a motion. I'm going to approve.
Second?
Motion to approve the motions, or I'm sorry, the move to approve the deletions and additions to the agenda, all the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Thank you. At this particular time, we have one person scheduled for the public forum, and that would be Cecil Meyer. Would you like to come to the podium? Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Cecil Meyer. I reside at 615 Becker Avenue Southwest here in Wilmer. I thank the council for allowing me here tonight to address yourselves and the general public, to share what I view and we view as a very important opportunity for the Wilmer area. On November 3rd, starting at 6:00 PM, Minnesota Teen Challenge is holding their first annual banquet in Wilmer. Minnesota Teen Challenge is a very successful international faith-based drug and alcohol residential treatment program. Minnesota Teen Challenge is now looking at the possibility of establishing a residential facility in one of two areas in Minnesota. Those two areas being West Central Minnesota with a facility in Wilmer, or the possibility of Rochester. It is important at this point in time that we show support in this area by attendance at the banquet forthcoming in November. We are here to invite the general public and public officials from the Wilmer area and all of the surrounding areas to the banquet. Our purpose for being here tonight and for providing the banquet is basically to create a broad-based support system for Minnesota Teen Challenge, starting with the banquet November 3rd at 6:00 PM. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight and then speak to this very important subject. If there's any questions, I certainly will answer them at this time.
I do have a comment. Go ahead, Councilmember Christensen.
Could you tell us where that banquet is being held?
Yes, banquet will be held at the Holiday Inn Conference Center. Thank you.
Would you say just a word about the high success rate that Teen Challenge has?
Scott?
I can, I can address that a little bit. If you are looking for more information in terms of the program and also success rates, et cetera, for the program, you can visit the website at Minnesota Teen Challenge. However, I'll just address it real briefly. The success rate for Minnesota Teen Challenge is approximately 83%. And what we, what we talk about in terms of percentages, there was just a report done by Minnesota Teen Challenge by a private agency that said 83% of the people that had been involved in the Teen Challenge program over the last number of years had been and remained drug-free the six months prior to the survey. So we're talking about people that have been there for, been out for 10 years, 30 years, five years, et cetera. But all of them had, the 83% had been drug-free or alcohol-free the prior six months before the report, so.
Thank you for sharing that. Are there any questions, Councilman Chris? Cecil, you and I have had discussions about this, and I, you know, I would stress with the council and the mayor and the public to really come out and support Minnesota Teen We have a large number of people that have gone through Minnesota Teen Challenge from this area. I don't know if you can quantify that in any way, but just the fact that, you know, the numbers that have gone through Teen Challenge from our area warrants the support of our public, that hopefully, we can get the center located here.
Yes, and I might mention that it's a possibility at this point, so they're looking at the support level in these two different areas. So yes, it is important that we show support in this area in terms of quantifying the number of people. I can't give you exact numbers on there. Throughout each year, there, I think you'd be surprised at the numbers from this area. When I'm talking about this area, I'm talking about the West Central region, which is a nine-county area that they've defined.
And I'm going to say to the council and everybody here and listening and watching, this would be a huge asset to our community, huge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Fagerly?
Where do you get tickets at, and how much are they? Or do you just show up?
The best, the best place probably, Councilman Fagerly, is to go to the Minnesota Teen Challenge website, and you can actually sign up there for tickets, and then they'll have your ticket present at the banquet, before the banquet. Another, another place, if you want a place here in town, Reading Therapy Center, which is located at the address that I gave you, that's where I actually live, at 615 Becker Avenue Southwest, you can go there and receive tickets also.
In fact, if you want to see me after the meeting, I've got the phone number and the website address that I can give you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Councilman Christensen? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How is Minnesota Teen Challenge funded? Is this state money, or is it all donations, or federal, or?
There is some state funding, some federal funding, but the majority comes from public support. And when I'm talking majority, I'm talking over the 80% level, private funding.
So they're 501(c)(3) then?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you again to the mayor and council.
With that, we will move into the Labor Relations Committee report for October 6, 2011. Councilman Johnson, or Ahmend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember one on the agenda was, we had public comments from David Huser from Country Club Drive, and he presented committee information regarding the city's health insurance premiums. In comparison to rates paid by Candy White County, Mr. Huser asked the committee to consider aligning city and county plans in the future, and that was taken for information. Number two was consideration of filling a bill and maintenance supervisor. Public Works Director Wilson explained the city had one vacant custodial position among three, and requested consideration to replace the vacant custodial position with a bill and maintenance supervisor position. Ms. Wilson explained that the custodial position was a grade one, and the building maintenance supervisor position would be a grade six. Ms. Wilson explained that the difference in cost for the remainder of this year would be approximately $7,000, and on a yearly basis, there was a $15,000 difference in the two pay grades. Ms. Wilson further explained that the position, proposed position would be a working supervisor responsible for performing maintenance and custodial work, but also responsible for providing day-to-day supervision, oversight, and task assignment to the other custodians who maintain the city's eight buildings. I questioned the costs included, I questioned the cost included, including the benefits. Councilmember DeBlick asked for more clarification on the supervisor, supervisor position roles. Councilmember Reese questioned if there could be cost savings by having an individual able to troubleshoot the HVAC and mechanical rather than rely on outside vendors. Councilman DeBlick asked if the individual would also be utilized for snow plowing. Councilmember Johnson questioned the need for a supervisor position and the pay grade range. Our city administrator, Ms. Stevens, explained that the proposed position went through the Hewitt scoring system, and that the city uses it as part of its pay equity program, and that is how it was determined to be a grade six. Balling discussion was made and seconded for the following, and the recommendation is to approve the position of the building maintenance supervisor, and the motion carried on a 3-1 vote, with Councilmember Johnson in opposition. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to bring this back to committee, rather than make a motion to move that forward. There's been other discussion with some other council people, talked to me about it, and we want to rethink this.
Evan, do I need a motion for that, to bring it back to the Finance Committee?
We always say we don't need a motion to do nothing, so.
That's true.
You're doing nothing.
We're doing nothing. Bring it back, just for your information.
Item number three was a consideration of filling the public works operator area vacancy. That was for information only. Ms. Stevens stated that a public works operator area employee who had previously turned in to a notice, turned in a notice to retire has withdrawn his notice, and therefore, no vacancy is, we have no vacancy at this time. Number four and five was consideration of ASME general unit and public works contracts. That was for information only. And Ms. Stevens stated that there was some contract language that needed to be clarified, and therefore, the contracts with the ASME groups were not ready for discussion at this time. Item number six was mislaining. Ms. Stevens reported on the previous question regarding labor relations and Minnesota statutes raised by Mr. Huser. Ms. Stevens distributed a detached response from our great city attorney, who's soon retiring, Mr. Roney. They clarified that negotiation sessions are open to the public, but do not require any posting nor any minutes, and that the council and committee can continue to meet in closed session to discuss strategy. There was a letter enclosed in your packet from Mr. Roney. Ms. Stevens also provided an update on the previous question raised by Councilmember Johnson regarding MUC and the city's hiring freeze. Ms. Stevens stated that she and Mary Yanish had recently met with the general manager, Bruce Gom, and vice chairman, Doug Lindblad, and, oh, and chairman, vice chairman, and requested that the MUC adhere to the city's hiring freeze. Councilman DeBlick noted that the city attorney had recently provided a six-month notice of retirement. Council members expressed their sincere appreciation for all the work that Mr. Roney has done over the past 37 years, the knowledge he provides, and noted that the challengers in replacing him are forthcoming. Motion was made and seconded for the following, that is, that the city accept with regret the notice of retirement from our city adminis, or city attorney.
Second? A motion has been made and seconded that the city council accept with regret the notice of retirement from the city attorney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Committee members discussed the replacement of the city attorney, and asked the city administrator to put the, to put on the discussion, the future agenda items, so we have more time to discuss what our options are and the costs. We also, I also asked if city staff had been able to obtain information on employees who have other insurance through a spouse. Ms. Stevens stated that the city did not collect that information. That staff had asked the insurance vendor, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, for this information, and they were unable to provide it. I mean, no, there's no further business. We move to close the meeting, and I will move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Second? A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the, of the Labor Relations Committee for October 6th discussion. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for our city attorney on item number six up there, where it's. It states, Mr. Rannin clarified that negotiation sessions are open to the public, but do not require any posting nor any minutes. What negotiation sessions are we talking about that are open to the public? When our attorney gets together, Frank, and the city administrator with the union bargaining people? Or which ones are you talking about?
Any labor negotiation sessions, when there wouldn't be the quorum of the council. There obviously, if the council was there, that would be a different story. But with the city administrator and the city labor attorney there, there's no meeting notice required. But by the section in 179(a), it does have to be open to the public when the negotiations are going on.
So currently and in the past, we have not posted those dates, correct?
Correct.
How does one find out about that if you're the public? They're going to have a meeting next Wednesday at 4:45, and it's contract negotiations. How does one find out? Do you have to call City Hall every day, or?
Well, you contact the city administrator. She's the person that would know when in the future there's going to be a meeting.
So if I or a member of the public said, I'd like to attend one of those meetings or all of them, if we called City Hall and told them that, they would contact us then, or the public, and say there's going to be one, or?
Well, you'd have to ask the city administrator if she'd do that. I suppose if it was a reasonable number of people that wanted to know, it wouldn't be burdensome. But if there's a list of 100 people to call, I don't imagine she's going to be real interested in doing that, or having her staff do that.
Okay. Then my second question is, what if the council voted no to your retirement?
They couldn't retire him. Well, I think you already voted, but if you had voted no, I guess I'd report to work on Monday, April 2nd.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Stevens, would you care to comment on Ron Christensen's comments that you made?
No, I think Rich answered that appropriately.
Perfectly.
There's no further clarification necessary for me, thank you.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the merits of the Labor Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. The Finance Committee report for October 10th, 2011. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was public comment. There was no one there to address us. The second item was Let's Go Fishing, talked to us. Joe Holm from Let's Go Fishing presented a request to us to consider a donation of $50,000 payable in $10,000 increments over five years. He explained that Let's Go Fishing just completed their 10th year and continues to grow. In 2011, nearly 20,000 people were served through this program. They recently lost funding from the state of Minnesota, and that totaled $300,000 for the last biennium. And that forced Let's Go Fishing to seek other funding sources. The 2012 budget for Let's Go Fishing was distributed to us along with the draft of their 2010 financial report. Councilmember Fagerly raised concerns that the city is already expending funds for its recreation department and maintaining city-located public accesses. After a good discussion, the matter was taken for information. And we said we'd talk about it tonight. We talked about it a little bit tonight, and I suspect we'll hear about it again. So that was for information only. The next item, we were supposed to hear from the Candy White County City of Wilmer EDC, but the executive director was unable to attend the meeting. And that will be presented at our next Finance Committee meeting. Fourth item was the 2012 mayor's proposed budget. Staff continued its process to review the proposed 2012 departmental budgets with us. Administrator Stevens noted that the decrease in the proposed city administrator's budget of $25,960 from 2011 is mainly due to costs associated with the search for the city administrator. Proposed budget for data processing is increasing $4,514 over 2011, and that's attributed to personnel costs. The proposed mayor-council budget is decreasing $15,540 from 2011, and that's due to a decrease in professional services. The proposed budget for the legal department is increasing less than a half a percent from 2011 to $196,737. Ms. Stevens' 2012 goals include obtaining the land releases for the former airport and subsequent expansion of the industrial park, overhaul of the city's website, and increasing communication with citizens, increasing the city's efforts at long-term financial planning, continuing to develop a strong working relationship with the mayor and council, and the replacement of the retiring city attorney. Finance Director Okens reviewed the proposed 2012 expenditures for the finance department, noting an overall increase of $7,740 over 2011. And that, again, is primarily due to personnel charges as well as office supplies and professional services. There was no capital outlay for the finance department. Finance Director Okens also provided an overview of the proposed 2012 non-departmental expenditures, noting variances from 2011. The mayor is proposing to terminate the David Church and Associates contract in 2012, which will reduce expenditures by $27,000. Also cut from the 2012 budget is the internship program, and that saves $5,000. After some discussion, that matter was taken for information only. And we noted there would be a work session today, which we've already had, where we talked a little bit more about the budget. The fifth item was a Dover Township fire contract. Staff reviewed with the committee the proposed fire protection contract for Dover Township. If you remember, we get this one, and we will at a later date get Wilmer Township. The statewide formula used to calculate the amount due from the township is based on information from the previous year, which includes operating costs of the fire department, depreciation of the fire station and equipment, the number of firefighter hours used, and market values of the area covered in Dover Township. Following discussion, there was a motion made second and passed. And I would introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement as presented in the amount of $30,487.92.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute the agreement as presented in the amount of $30,487.92. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Armin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dachin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Final item was Ms. Laney. Mayor Yanish reported to us that after pursuing the possibility of having the governor stop in Wilmer on his Job Z tour, it was recently learned that he will be unable to do so. The mayor and staff will continue to work to invite the governor to Wilmer. That was for information only. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee for October 10th, 2011. Discussion? All those in favor, say, whoops, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. At this time, we'll have the Public Works Safety Committee report for October 11th, 2011. Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council will recall, our last meeting, we had some discussions in regards to removal of trees from 35th Street Northwest right-of-way. And Arlen Raizner, who's a resident in that area, was at our meeting. And his property abuts the right-of-way. And the issue of tree removal in the right-of-way occurred when city personnel were locating a storm sewer manhole for several residents, planning to use it as an outlet for a backyard drainage project. The amount and size of the trees made it difficult to locate the manhole. And a tree had grown partially around it. And if you were at the meeting, Holly had pictures of it. And I was amazed how it had grown around it and actually covered it up. The trunk of the tree was growing over the top of the manhole, actually. And city staff intended to clear the right-of-way until residents in that area voiced their concern about losing the trees that provide them with a windbreak in privacy. Public Works Director Holly Wilson informed the committee an extension of the Western Collector's plan to be installed in this right-of-way in the future. And that clearing the larger trees at this time is more cost-effective. After lengthy discussion, staff was directed to mark the trees for removal that are over 24 inches in diameter or larger, so that residents are aware of which ones will be removed. And as trees reach the 24-inch diameter in the future, our city crews will also be removing those trees until such time as the interceptor is installed. And the entire right-of-way at that time would be cleared and grubbed. This would allow residents time to plant and grow trees on their own property. This was for information only. It's really not a policy question.
I do have a question for Councilman Reese. Has that been done? Have the trees been marked?
The trees have been marked.
The trees have been marked.
Yes, the trees have been marked. And it was determined there were two trees that met the 24-inch or greater diameter and an additional two clumps, I would say, are groups of trees that had grown together. And I have a picture of those that were marked for removal because of the way that they were growing. Each trunk, of course, isn't 24 inches in diameter, but they're growing together in a group. And so those were marked for removal as well.
Okay, thank you. So unless there's questions, I'll go on to the next.
Okay, sure. All right, sure. Okay. The next item is a change order. And the city retained West Central Environmental Consultants in 2011 for an amount of $5,959 to conduct a limited site enduring removal of an underground diesel fuel tank at the old wastewater treatment facility. Soil contamination was found resulting in the MPCA requesting the limited site investigation. West Central Environmental Consultants has prepared a change order in an amount not to exceed $3,054 to conduct additional soil borings to further define the small amount of contamination that was identified in the investigation. And staff is recommending acceptance of the proposal. I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to approve the change order for the additional borings presented by West Central Environmental in the amount not to exceed $3,054 and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. Excuse me. A motion has been made to approve the change order for the additional soil borings presented by WCEC in an amount not to exceed $3,054 and to authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Armin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dachin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Next item was a request for approval of a revision to former Trunk Highway 40. The request comes from Public Works Director Holly Wilson. And that section of old Trunk Highway 40 is now Industrial Drive Southwest from 30th Street Southwest to Trunk Highway 12. And that's about a little over a mile, and that'd be a turnback. And the designation would allow the city to receive needs for this segment in 2012. So I would introduce the resolution to designate the portion of Industrial Drive Southwest from 30th Street Southwest to Trunk Highway 12 as a municipal state aid street.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to designate the portion of Industrial Drive Southwest from 30th Street Southwest to Trunk Highway 12 as a municipal state aid street. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Armin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dachin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was in regards to the Eagle Lake Sewer District and a rate amendment. And an amendment to the current ordinance is needed to reduce Eagle Lake sewer rates for 2011 and 2012. That sewer district has been advised that when the city revisits sewer rates as part of another rate study planned for 2012, they will likely see an increase in their rates. And the committee was informed that annexation possibly could be a consideration that the council should be looking at. And staff is currently monitoring the costs associated with the Eagle Lake sewer system. There was no action on the annexation, however, I think that would be well worth our consideration and discussion. But I would introduce the amendment to the ordinance for hearing on November 7th, 2011.
Second. A motion has been made to introduce the amendment to the ordinance for the hearing on November 7th. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
If the council will recall, the last meeting, Faith at Work was going to make a donation of cash. But that didn't seem to work out quite the way we thought it would. So right now, Faith at Work is going to donate two utility task force vehicles and one trailer, and then some cash of $223.09. And the donated items are purchased from funds raised as a result of the Faith at Work community-wide service held on September 11th at the Civic Center. The donated equipment would be stored at the fire department, at the Wilmer Fire Department, and the Wilmer ambulance garage, but would also be shared as needed by various local emergency services groups during events and emergency responses throughout the county. So I would introduce a resolution to accept the donation from Wilmer Area Faith at Work on behalf of the city of Wilmer and acknowledge its receipt by letter.
Second. A motion has been made and a second to accept the donation from Wilmer Area Faith at Work on behalf of the city of Wilmer and acknowledge its receipt by letter. Discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understand it, Doug, this is for county-wide use, correct?
Yes.
The entire county. There's presently one in Wilmer at the Rescue Squad building. Wouldn't it be prudent to maybe have one or two of these floating in the county? Maybe keep one in Raymond for six months or a year, or one in Atwater, or one in New London? I mean, wouldn't something like that be plausible?
Well, Faith at Work has left this up to all of the department heads, the five different departments, and where these would be located. I don't know if Fire Chief Calvin or Chief Weifels want to comment on that, either one?
Mayor Yanish, Councilmember Reese, Councilmember Christensen. The vehicles could be used anyplace throughout the county. One of the things that we looked at when we looked at it through the emergency response agencies is rapid deployment and having staffing available to deploy the units in a reasonable amount of time. With that being said, we felt that having them located in Wilmer would be the best use. And the recommendation of Faith at Work was also to have them to where they'd be available to anybody. This question was discussed and addressed at the committee level. And it was agreed that there should be someplace where they would have access 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And with the police department and the sheriff's department, the rescue squad, the ambulance, and Wilmer Fire all being located within town, we felt that if they needed to be deployed, they could be deployed in a timely fashion. What would happen is the police department or the sheriff's department would have access to the fire department to get theirs. And then the ambulance is staffed 24 hours a day, so they could deploy theirs if needed. So I think we've addressed the issue. Again, like Councilmember Reese. to the Fire Department to get theirs, and then the ambulance is staffed 24 hours a day so they could deploy theirs if needed. So I think we've addressed the issue. Again, like Councilmember Reese said, it was discussed, it was talked about, and that was a recommendation of the department directors on what to do. If we wanted to accept it with that understanding, we certainly could do that, but it would not be our recommendation.
Any further discussion? A motion has been made for the resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Ahman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Baggarly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item was a request from Chief Weifels for permission to apply for a grant through policegrantshelp.com where a mobile recon robot may be possible to be obtained by the city. The robot allows an operator to remotely control and direct a small device containing a wireless-mounted camera into an area with known hazards without exposing an officer. The approximate cost of the robot is $19,000. There would be no local dollar match request in this grant. I would introduce the resolution, the grant permission, to review, apply for, and if awarded, accept the grant through policegrantshelp.com to be used to purchase the recon robot.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to grant permission to review, apply for, and if awarded, accept the grant through policegrantshelp.com to be used to purchase a recon robot. Discussion.
Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Baggarly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ahman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
There is no other business conducted, and that's the end of the minutes, so I would move to file the minutes unless there's questions.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee Report for October eleventh, 2011. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. We have the Community Development Committee Report for October thirteenth. Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting was held on the thirteenth of October. Mayor Yanish, Randy Cardell, the building official, and Laura Becker, who were present also, there were no public comments. Item number two dealt with the Mobile Home Parks and update on its for information only. Building official Cardell explained that the Mobile Home Park manager was unable to attend the meeting due to medical reasons. Mr. Cardell provided an update on activities at the park, noting that some concerns with trash removal, but also noting progress on identifying trailers that were no longer habitable. Mr. Cardell stated that the park's new management was actively trying to improve conditions. Chair Dacken asked if there was any effort to consolidate the two parks into one. Councilmember Christensen asked if new trailers were being added. Councilmember Ahman stated he was pleased to see the new park management was working to improve conditions in the park, and I would ask if Charlene or if Mr. Peterson could make some additional comments about what we're seeing out there as far as improvements.
Mayor Yanish, Councilmember Dacken, I hesitate to use the word improvements. I think we're seeing a little bit better maintenance. Right now, I understand the primary vehicle that they use for pulling the trailer for waste removal is broken down, and they are unable to currently perform that task, so we will see some deteriorating conditions this week until that problem is solved. We do have the interest of management and of ownership now that they made a trip out here last week and looked at the parks. The long-term prognosis for improvements is good, but it's going to take a real concerted effort by staff, by the management, by the ownership to stay on top of it, and hopefully we can get the county engaged in that process as well. I think we will be seeing a lot of old homes, abandoned homes, removed from the park. The numbers are getting down, so I think we're less than 70% occupancy in each of the parks right now, and at some point, it's got to become an economic issue for the owners, and they will have to make some decisions as to what direction those parks will take in the future.
Okay, thank you for that. Item number three, John's Supper Club update, again, this is for information only. Mr. Cardell provided a report of recent construction activities occurring at the John's Supper Club property and provided photos of the progress to date. Mr. Cardell noted that he had completed two inspections, and the building staff, and building staff were in regular contact with the property owner, and progress was being made, but it was slow progress. Chair Dacken questioned if the property owner would meet the December, actually, December thirty-first, 2011 deadline. Mr. Cardell expressed doubts as to the work being completed by the deadline. Chair Dacken noted that the committee would have to continue to monitor the work and make a decision by early December. And, Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we could, this is a real big decision that we're going to have to make, and I think that at some point, the council needs to be a part of this discussion. And I wonder if we couldn't have just a little bit of discussion tonight about this. I mean, what are our expectations? This has been going on now for fifteen years. What lessons have we learned? And what are we going to do? Because there are other buildings in downtown Wilmer that are maybe not in the same condition that this one is in. We really need to establish a council policy so that this doesn't occur again.
I believe you're right, Chair, Councilman Dacken. I will share this with you, is that I did take another tour today with the owner of that property, and found that there has been considerable progress made since the last time I went through there. I would say that you're right, and that there should be a discussion that will be held before the first December as to what to do and how to do it if things are not done, because we can only continue to extend his time to get it done a certain amount of times, but it just seems that the real crunch, this time, he's really working earnestly at trying to get this done by the end of December. I also don't believe that'll happen, but, so the council needs to be prepared to make a decision on that when the time comes, and I would ask that they do that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If he makes substantial progress by December thirty-first, I can't see this council demolishing that building. I mean, Mr. Peterson stated at their committee meeting that he's at the point of time where he's going to be spending a chunk of money for heating, cooling, ventilating, plumbing, and once that equipment gets put in place, I mean, we're talking many thousands of dollars, and I personally couldn't approve of demolishing a building that got that amount of dollars invested at that particular point, but I say we deal with it when the time comes. We'll see what happens December fifteenth, twentieth, and...
Councilman Reese. Well, it's just a question, you know, and I understand what you're saying, but what other option do we have to get the work done, to get the building improved? What, I mean, I don't know if somebody can answer that from staff, but, I mean, we don't have any other leverage here, do we?
At this point, my answer would be no. Ideally, we'd have some type of an agreement crafted where he had posted some security, and failure to perform would have allowed the city to draw upon that security and hire the work done. That is not the case, and quite frankly, I'm not familiar with a situation a city's ever done that, or been involved with, that would allow that to happen. Progress is being made. I'm hopeful that the work will be completed. If the building is trending towards functional and habitable by the end of the year, I'll be ecstatic because that will be far in excess of anything we've witnessed in the past. And I agree with Councilmember Dacken. The city should have a policy to deal with those particular types of buildings. The problem is, you've only got two options, and that if the owner doesn't maintain them, you can issue repair orders, you can issue corrective orders, but if the owner doesn't adhere to those orders or comply with those orders, your only option is to either, well, you have two options. You can accept his failure and continue to work with the person, or you can make a declaration and find the building to be unsafe. At that point, the city takes on the responsibility for demolition of that structure and those costs involved, and it becomes a financial decision for the council at that point.
Well, I, it's, I wouldn't have remembered that it's fifteen years. I knew it was a long time. I would have guessed it was even a little more than that, but...
Since the fire, it's been twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years, okay, because I remember when I first got on the council, we would have meetings at John's Supper Club. We had some supper meetings over there. It's a long time ago, and this has been something that repeatedly has been brought up even before Mr. Cardowski owned the building. And then he bought it, and we thought, okay, something's going to get done. It's sat totally idle until we started pushing it, and that's my frustration, is what other leverage do we have? And I would agree, Jim. We probably need some kind of a policy on this, because this is very frustrating to have a building sitting like that downtown that is in such disrepair for such a long period of time.
Thank you, Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some such policy could include fines, and I know that dollars motivate people to do things, and lack of dollars also motivate people to do things, so the policy could include a fine for, if they don't meet 80% of completion by a certain date, or 90%, or 100%, that motivates people. That's not saying I'm full of fines, but it would motivate people.
Yeah, that did sound... Could you put that on your agenda to discuss that further? I would appreciate that.
Thank you for allowing the discussion.
You're welcome.
Item number four, vacant rental homes. Mr. Cardell discussed the city's process for monitoring vacant properties and cross-referencing the Center Point Energy Termination List with the MUC's shut-off list. Mr. Cardell noted that, noted the difficulty in monitoring owner-occupied activities as there is no right of entry or inspection. It was noted that vacant homes can be found in all quadrants of the city. Chair Dacken expressed the need to develop a strategy to maintain entry-level homes in the city. The committee also requested additional information on recent legislation regarding time limits for building permits. Item number five is miscellaneous. Councilmember Ahman raised a question regarding the enforcement of licensing requirements for residential contractors. Mr. Cardell stated that it is, that it is a state enforcement. Councilmember Ahman questioned the expenses for the JOBSI program and the Economic Development Commission. City Administrator Stevens stated that the EDC would be presenting its budget at the next Finance Committee meeting on October thirty-first, 2011, and she would make Councilmember Anderson aware of Mr. Ahman's concern. Chair Dacken stated he would also make the committee aware of the concerns. Mr. Cardell stated that expansion plans are underway for Mills Parts, Little Bean Coffee Shop, Hope Pregnancy Center, and the Assembly of God Church. There was no further business, so unless there are questions, Mr. Mayor, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee Report dated October thirteenth, 2011. Discussion. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a correction on the last sentence, it says, Councilmember Johnson seconded the motion.
Oh, sorry about that. That was probably using...
He didn't attend the meeting.
Yeah, that was probably using a template from another meeting, so apologize for that. We'll get that corrected.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. The next item would be a consideration of currency exchange applications between the Bennett Ventures Incorporated and Mr. Dill-Sumblum, Doing Businesses Quick Funds Incorporated. Kevin, did you want to explain that to us?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, every year around this time, we receive the currency exchange license applications from the state of Minnesota. We have an opportunity to make comment on those in the first sixty days we've received, so staff's recommending, recommending that you hold a hearing. Each one's a separate hearing. We can receive public comments before we make our comments at the state of Minnesota. We'll get those early in November seventh.
Need to approve. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to hold the hearing on November seventh, 2011. Discussion. Kevin, I have just one question for you. I got a call today from a person, does everyone that is in that business need to obtain a permit or a license?
Certainly, but you have to understand the workings of the business. Anytime someone come in with a thousand-dollar check, cash it and take a percentage. But there are others who can take a thousand-dollar check and someone buys $200 worth of supplies and gives the change back. So you have to monitor the transaction to really understand what's happening.
Okay. That would be a simple motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. The next item would be the consideration of an ordinance to rezone a lot, a lot from R4 to R3. And, please?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, at the Planning Commission meeting last week, the Planning Commission discussed an application to rezone a lot on the south edge of the Central Business District from R4 to R3. A number of years back, the Planning Commission amended the comprehensive plan to provide for quite a bit higher-density housing adjacent to the Central Business District. At that time, there was no problem in the mortgage industry with writing mortgages for non-conforming structures, for the most part. Since that time, loan underwriting standards have become much more restrictive, and because our ordinance classifies single-family homes in that district as non-conforming structures at this time, if they were destroyed by reason of fire or tornado or whatever, to the extent of 50% or more of their value, our ordinance would not allow them to be rebuilt on those lots. Obviously, this makes the mortgage companies a little bit nervous. In order to accommodate these people and to make their properties saleable and purchasable and re, and to keep them... purchasable and re, uh, and to keep them from becoming, um, useless pieces of property in the market, the planning commission is recommending that we proceed with this rezoning of this particular property. I would make that recommendation, that the ordinance be introduced for a hearing at the next council meeting, and also let you know that the planning commission is going to be considering the balance of that R four property and possibly coming forward in the future with a recommendation to rezone all of that R four property to R three, uh, to eliminate this problem that exists in the current real estate market.
Thank you. I'll move staff's recommendation. Second, the motion has been made and seconded to, uh, introduce a public hearing for that ordinance, uh, for a public hearing on November seventh, two thousand and eleven. And, uh, all those in favor, open the session. We have a discussion? Anything questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, Bruce, on, do we have to have a request from the other property owners to do that? Can the city just change it from R four to R three?
Rezoning can be initiated either by property owners, the planning commission, or the council.
Okay. Would there be a reason why we wouldn't add that, an amendment to this, saying, let's do the whole thing at one hearing?
Um, we discuss that at the planning commission. We're actually gonna notify the property owners affected by this and, uh, give them the opportunity to come in and have a discussion with the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
The motion has been made and seconded to, uh, to recommend the ordinance be introduced for, uh, public hearing on November seventh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Uh, consideration of the preliminary plat, or tuition addition to that, and you too, Bruce?
Yes. Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the planning commission considered a preliminary plat submitted by John Tuishia, and the name of the plat is, interestingly enough, Tuishia Edition. It's a four-lot plat that contains two outlots, and the outlots are intended for access purposes. Two lots are being replatted. They're part of a different addition right now, and one lot is being newly created and will be sold for developments presumably to the Hope Pregnancy Center. The entire plat is being platted as a common interest community with a private drive that will be owned and maintained by the property owners. There will be, uh, declarations filed with the plat dealing with all the ownership issues for the outlots and the private drive. The planning commission has approved the preliminary plat, but attached conditions regarding, uh, the addition of utility easements, um, meeting city requirements for fire hydrant installation, and dealing with the existing assessments against the property, and with those conditions, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat.
Do we need a motion on that?
No, I can't make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the preliminary plat of the Tuishia Edition. Uh, discussion? Councilman Amon?
Question. Bruce, on, on lot number three, the purpose or intent of, uh, Outlot A or the new street going in this forty point zero eight feet wide is to gain access egress and ingress out of that area, correct, onto Lot Three?
Yes. Right now, Lot Three has, um, the bakery depot that operates from that property.
Right.
And one of the requirements that they had in leasing the property was that they needed, uh, two different means of ingress and egress. They had both of those on Wilmer Avenue, but when Wilmer Avenue was reconstructed several years ago, uh, the county wanted the easterly access removed because it was too close to the intersection, so as part of that project, the county and the city jointly provided the Outlot A access, M C, on this plat, on this plat. And the Outlot B is simply, um, an addition of property so that they can maintain a decent curvature to that, uh, and radius to that, uh, Outlot. So it's, it's primarily, it was put in there to access Lot Three, but it will also provide the, uh, only access to Lot Four.
Right.
Which is the site proposed for the new, uh, Hope Pregnancy Center.
Thank you very much.
Other questions or discussion? Any other motion on the table? Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of the Rice Hospital bylaws revisions. Charlene, would you like to address us on that?
Sure. Mayor, council, you have before you, um, some revisions from Rice Hospital to their, uh, bylaws and such, and Rice Hospital updates their bylaws on a pretty regular basis. The last update and revision means in September of, uh, two thousand and eleven. The, um, revisions that are made are made to reflect and comply with the current standards of the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services and the Joint Commission. Um, the summary of the, of the changes is in, in Article One, Section Two, Subsection A, they currently have language that is to maintain a hospital for the care of persons suffering from illness and disabilities, which require that patients receive in and outpatient hospital care, long-term care, and care in other settings irrespective of age, and they are, um, adding language that, um, includes race, ethnicity, religion, culture, language, physical or mental disability, socioeconomic status, sex, sexual, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression. Um, Article Two, Section Five, Article, I'm sorry, Article Five, Section One, Subsection C, they have language that, um, includes a care improvement team to optimize clinical quality through patient-focused, evidence-based, data-driven, efficient care, delivery processes which extend across the care delivery continuum, and they're adding language to annually establish clinical improvement priorities, which support the Rice mission and strategic plan. They have language to establish criteria for ongoing measurement and reporting of individual progress and to make, um, and this is the addition, quarterly reports to the medical executive committee and the hospital board regarding such projects, to coordinate and hand us appropriate, integrate organization-wide quality improvement efforts to assure compliance with clinical quality improvement requirements established by regulatory and accredited agencies, and to charter and support clinical performance work groups as needed. Um, and I would recommend that you approve the changes as submitted by Rice Hospital to their bylaws.
No move. Second. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the bylaw revisions as written. Um, discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Just a quick question, Charlene. Um, those are the only changes in the underlying ones, right?
These, the underlying's changes are the only changes in, uh, you know, in their bylaws. The whole bylaws are attached, but we asked them specifically to some, for the changes, and these are the only changes to the bylaws.
The rest stays, the rest stays the same.
The rest stays the same.
Thank you.
All those in, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries. Uh, we'll move into the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Amon?
Uh, next week, Thursday? Or this Thursday, excuse me, this Thursday, four forty-five, Labor Relations. Thanks, Charlene.
Four forty-five, this Thursday, and that would be in, uh, at the...
Term one, City Office Billings.
And, uh, Councilman Anderson?
The Finance Committee will not meet next Monday. We will meet the following Monday, Halloween, uh, October thirty-first at four forty-five.
Costumes are not necessary. Costumes are not required.
Oh, good. Costumes are not required. Treats are. Treats are. I was just gonna say that. And no tricks.
Okay, and, uh, Councilman Reese?
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, four forty-five, Public Works, Public Safety.
And, uh, Councilman Dacken?
Twenty-seventh, at four forty-five.
Uh, we'll move into, uh, miscellaneous. Are there any, or is there any? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I get from Rice Hospital, as the, uh, council liaison there, uh, a number of activities that have taken place, it's called this week at Rice, and, uh, Marla Spalatsky, uh, is a volunteer at Rice, and now she is a national award winner. Could I just read a couple of things here?
Okay.
Rice Hospice volunteer, Marla Spalatsky, accepted the two thousand and eleven Patient/Family Support Award from the National Hospice and Palliative Care Organization. Goes on to talk about how active she has been since nineteen ninety-three. She has volunteered with eighty-eight patients and bereaved family members for a total of seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three hours to date, and has driven seventy-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-three miles through western Minnesota. So she has, uh, really done great work on behalf of, uh, cancer patients at, uh, Rice Hospital.
Thank you. Um, if you get the opportunity, would you congratulate, uh, Ms. Spalatsky and Mr. Schram?
Pardon?
Would you congratulate both of those for me?
I will.
Thank you. Any further miscellaneous? Councilman Amon?
Uh, food for thought, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, we don't always talk about, um, I, you know, some ideas, but the thought I had was on, uh, the investment, the return on the investment we're having on, uh, keeping up with our infrastructure, and when I was out at the Public Works Garage here last year, or actually a year and a half ago, I just saw the inefficiency of the buildings out there and the, uh, the way they're designed and, uh, the gas that's used to heat those facilities, and I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be looking at a long-term payback, um, and invest into a ground source heat pump to, uh, eventually help pay for the cost of operating, maintaining that bill, and maybe, I think it's gonna be definitely a payback, and we have the room out there, and that's just one facility. Uh, I just wonder if that could be brought over to Public Works for discussion, that how we're gonna do that in our operating budget, uh, in the future. I don't plan on bringing anything up this year, but I think that might be a good investment and see a return on our investment, uh, as time continues and gas prices increase.
I would say to bring that up at a Public Works meeting, uh...
We can, we can look at Public Works, Public Safety, or again, um, as we plan the two thousand and thirteen budget, which I think is what you're asking, Councilmember Amon. Are you, are you asking for, to look at it for the, you know, not for twelve, but for two thousand and thirteen budget planning?
No, this is no rush, yeah, yeah, for two thousand and thirteen, but we can maybe do some preliminary estimate in cost to see if that's gonna work out.
We can do that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any further miscellaneous? Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn. As I said, a move to adjourn has been made and seconded, we are adjourned.